All right, we are recording. I'll try to stay on top of that waiting room. We do have a quorum. Hopefully, Rob is able to show up here soon. But we will move forward. Today is a department head meeting. We're gonna bypass Tal until he comes back on. So we'll start with Anthony.
Okay, can you hear me?
I can, yes.
Okay. I only have a few things here. The new truck that I told you was coming next week, I got a phone call this afternoon and then it'll be here tomorrow.
Excellent.
So they're gonna deliver tomorrow morning. The other thing I have is the sidewalk on 5 North Church with the complaint. We look for the bluestone today.
Yeah.
Have enough bluestone to do the sidewalk.
You do not have enough bluestone?
We do not have enough.
Okay.
So if you want us to do it, we'll have to replace the concrete that's broken now with concrete.
Okay, that's fine. How unsafe does it look to you?
It's pretty bad. It's pretty bad. And then up the street a little bit further where the other tree is, it's doing the same thing and that's really bad.
Okay, so while you're there, why don't you just knock both of those out then?
Okay.
Yeah, thank you.
Up by the last alley at the top of Second Street.
Yep.
On the south side, there's a willow tree there. It's kinda like the one that was over by the community center.
Yep.
It's pretty close to the line. Well, two big branches came out of it. The last storm that we had.
Yeah.
One went across the alley. It took out the guy's fence on the other side. And the other branch came down and hit the house. I think there's only two stalks left to it. And they wanted, the people that live there in that one house there would like to know if it could be removed.
Is it definitely a village tree?
Well, that's, it's like the one on, like I said, the alley across from the community center that we looked at. It's on that borderline.
Let's plan on taking a look at it together.
The old street there that one we took down.
Let's plan on taking a look at it together.
Okay.
It sounds like it's definitely unsafe.
Yeah.
Just if, you know, if it's in doubt, then, you know, if it's on the line, then we'll do it.
Okay.
But I just wanna take a look at it if it's, you know, get in the habit of.
Yeah.
If it's on their personal property, obviously.
Oh, we need, I would like to rent an excavator to dig the water sewer line for the new building.
Yep.
It's $2,000 a month. We have the money in the budget to, $4,000 in the budget to rent it. So I'd like permission to go ahead and rent it for the month.
Give me one sec. I'm gonna let Rob in. Okay, sorry, guys. I wasn't watching my waiting room well enough. Okay, so the request is for the DPW to be allowed to spend $2,000 to rent an excavator to do the water and sewer for the DPW building. What's the timeline for that?
We still, we got time to rent it. We don't have to get it wrecked like next week. But within the next two weeks, we'd like to do it and get it started so you can get the water line back there so that we don't hold them up at all.
All right. Would anyone like to make a motion to endorse, to allow for the rent of an excavator?
So moved.
I'll second.
I connected late, so what's the excavator for?
To put the water and sewer in for the new DPW building. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed.
Yeah, while we're on the subject of the new building, we're supposed to have a meeting this morning to discuss what's gonna be happening. And they started digging the footing walls this morning.
It's a good thing.
Yeah, so that's it. The work is in progress. They started and now it'll just keep running on going.
And the GC will have a project plan to me, he said, tomorrow.
Yes.
So we have a general layout of what the anticipated dates are from a project plan standpoint so that we can keep track of how we're doing against the planned timeline. I'm hoping that project plan has a, you know, a move in sort of at the new year standpoint. But we'll talk to him about that when we get something from him.
Robbie, while you're on, the new truck is gonna be delivered tomorrow, next week.
Oh, okay, yep.
And the only other thing I have is the old pickup truck, it keeps, is still locking up and it's very unsafe to drive. When you drive down a road 30 miles an hour, it just decides to lock up. And sooner or later, somebody's gonna get hit with it. So I was talking to Mary Jo and asked them if we could take Antonio's salary for the year and put it towards a new pickup truck. And we'll work with the three guys we have for the rest of this year until next spring. I can live with that. If you guys can figure, think that maybe you could do something like that.
MJ, do you know how much is in the reserve for a truck right now?
Well, we just started the new year. There's 15,000 in there.
Okay, and how much would have been in salary for a fourth employee?
I figured it out today. It's 33,586 we'll save by not having that fourth employee for the DPW.
33,586, 15 in the reserve.
Plus, we're also gonna, if the board is willing to, to sell the old dump truck. And we're hoping to get at least 20,000 for that.
Okay, so what I'd like to do right now is just authorize you to go out and get some quotes?
I got one quote from Crossroads. How many would you like? Well, we got one, I got one quote from Crossroads before, like, I think it was in January, for 41,000.
I'd like to look at the auction site as well for some, you know, call them relatively new used trucks. We get there.
I understand your point on that, but I'm gonna tell you right now, those things you see coming up on auction, you're basically looking, taking a risk of buying somebody else's headaches. That's the problem with, when you see those municipality auctions, they're, they serve their usefulness with that municipality. So therefore, when they get to the point where they're not cost effective to run anymore, they put them up for surplus auctions.
Is a municipality auction the only option?
Well, that I know of, yeah. I don't, I mean, I know people bought vehicles off of eBay and got burned on them.
This is, well, I mean, we could look at dealer trucks, right? I mean, this is, what is it, a 250, a 350?
A 350. And the one I looked at is diesel. It's not gas. So it'll last a lot longer than the gas, the gas fuel.
I mean, you know, I agree with Anthony on, you know, the price that he did get from Crossroads. You know, I've worked for an auto dealership and that price he got is an, it's an awesome price on a diesel power pickup truck. The diesel engine alone is a relatively high-end option on a pickup truck. But like Anthony said, you gotta look at the reliability factor down the road. The truck will last much longer. You can go longer. Oil change intervals, for one thing. You know, I'm confident enough to say we can pull the money together to get him this new truck. And he did call me the other day to tell me that the problems they were having with it and the problem with that truck they got, there's an electrical problem. Somewhere's in the wiring harness that we believe. And if that's the case, you're talking about, to fix the problem, once and for all, you're talking about pulling the whole wiring harness out and replacing it with a new wiring harness. And that's thousands of dollars in repairs. You're pretty much putting money into a dead horse. And the truck already has 95,000, what I call hard miles on it. That's a lot of miles of plowing, snow, plowing parking lots out. And whatever else they use it for during the course of the year. And Anthony said that we're pretty sure we could probably get 20,000 back alone on the old DPW dump truck. And if I remember correctly, I think that price he got from Crossroads, what was that, 42, 43,000?
I think it was like 41 something.
41,000?
Yeah, I know it's 41,000. It might be a couple hundred dollars on that.
I'm just not in favor of buying used. And I've worked with Roger on the police department for years. And I know that's one of the reasons why he don't buy used police cars because in simple terms, they're just junk. They won't, you know, in a couple of years, you're replacing the car again, you know? And in between that time, you're dumping money in repairs. And I, you know, I'm just looking at cost effectiveness down the road. And, you know, the, you know, the truck is tired. It's served the village well, but, you know, it's coming up 15 years old with 95,000 hard miles. And any, I'm gonna tell you right now, any more money we wanna put in this truck, I'm gonna oppose it. You know, I'm pretty sure I can go with Anthony to get more prices. We can get some, you know, good prices on, you know, if you wanna get a couple more prices on trucks.
Can I interrupt? It just, it seems like, I didn't hear the mayor expressing any opposition to purchasing a new vehicle, Rob. I think all he's asking, and it makes sense, is just to do a little shopping around to see if we can get a better price. His initial suggestion was an auction. Sounds like you don't recommend that, but you did say, you know, maybe look around and see.
I wasn't suggesting an auction. What I was suggesting is my assumption, and correct me if I'm wrong here, Anthony, is this is, with the exception of the paint job, it's an off-the-lot diesel 350.
Yes.
So, you know, a program car, a low mileage, if there's anything available. So here's what I will say. We will come to the next meeting with a resolution to transfer 30,000 out of the salary budget into the reserve for a truck. But I do wanna see some quotes.
Okay.
And I would like to see some quotes on off-the-lot used, low mileage used, and see how much that saves us.
Okay. All right.
We will compare all of that. You know, for, the intent had been to wait another year or two. We were gonna 30,000 a year into the reserve.
I thought we had the problem solved when we, when we took it out and had the transmission put in. We thought it was solved, but it's still right back to doing it again.
Okay. Well, I understand that we can see a path to it, but I would like to see two other quotes on new. And I'd like to see some quotes on low mileage used.
Okay.
Yeah?
Yep. That's all I have.
Actually have a question for you, Anthony. Can you give an update on the slip lining project?
The only thing I know is that we had cats go through them up and televised it again. And we, where we thought the laterals ran into the sewer line, we dumped a bunch of water down. No water came out, so we're pretty sure that the drains do not run into the sewers. And then Jason was gonna take it from there and do what he had to do on his end. And that's, I haven't heard no more about it from Jason.
Stefan, have you, has Jason said anything to you?
No, I just got that same email. So basically, the intent is to move forward with the originally planned slip lining. That that's where we're gonna get the biggest benefit.
Yes, and it just seems like this is construction season and so forth and so on. I just, sort of makes sense to kind of get going on.
Ah, okay. I will, I'll reach out to Jason and see why we haven't, what it'll take to get moving. I did just sign, is this the same grant? I had to re-sign the Nicerda grant. Is that the same grant?
I think so. I'm not sure what you had to sign, but it is from Nicerda. MJ, is that what it was?
Yes.
Yeah, so I had to re-sign.
Yeah, that just went out today. They also mentioned on that email that, where is it?
Why did it need to be re-signed?
Because, wait, I'll get the information for you in just a second. All right, here it is. They had to revise it because the final version of the contract states that the Village of Athens will apply Envision Best Practices or Pursue Certification through the Institute for Sustainable Infrastructure. So basically, it was just a technicality in the actual contract. So it had to be changed, re-signed, which I just got on Monday. And now what it says here is that, I will, it says, "I will also then reach out to our contractor, Lori, to start putting together a metrics workbook." Once they get this signed, this revision, that you will use for Task 2. Remember, you cannot start any work until Task 2 is approved by me. So I guess they needed that revision there. And I don't know what the metrics workbook is. I haven't looked at this in a while. But, so I know Jason took that metrics workbook and was gonna work on it. And so that's where it stands now.
Couple of quick questions. You said you were reading from something until the something is signed by me. Me as this Readerman or Viederman?
Yeah, it's Viederman. Yeah, Robert Viederman.
And then I think you also said in passing that they needed to add language that said the Village of Athens is gonna seek some sort of certification?
Yeah, it says, "Or pursue certification through the Institute for Sustainable Infrastructure."
And that's a new thing that they've added to the contract?
Yeah, the original contract did not have that in there. And it's called Envision Best Practices is the certification that needs to be in there.
Do we know what that means, that we now have an obligation to achieve that certification?
I can send you, what I'll do is forward you this contract. It's pretty thick here.
Okay.
So I know, I'm pretty sure that Jason had read it too. So he was familiar with the metrics workbook that they're looking for.
That I knew about, but this certification, I just don't know what it is.
All right, I'll send you it. I'll email it to you.
Thank you.
That's all I have.
All right. Anything else for Anthony?
Tal, do I have you back? I'm back. I still couldn't activate my camera, though, unfortunately.
That's all right. We know what you look like.
You don't need to see my ugly mug. I didn't shave today, anyway. I'm actually pretty quiet on my end. Mary Jo and I are working on getting those local laws filed, the short-term rental and the moratorium. So we'll take care of that probably tomorrow. I sent you around the proposed renewal for the cultural center. I know it wasn't, it was late this afternoon, but it's essentially exactly the same as what we had before other than just updating the dates on it. So I recommend that we go ahead and make that resolution, authorize Stefan to sign it and get it on over.
Everyone get a look at it? Tal, I just had one question. There's no termination via mutual consent or anything?
We can add that if you'd like. We just, I just basically use what we had in a can from last time.
Tal, I have a question.
Sure.
On number two, where it says renewal, says the less seen may renew the lease for two consecutive five-year terms. Should that be increased to 10-year terms?
Could be. I suppose it could, yeah. There's no prohibition against that, but that's up to you guys.
Why would you wanna push for that?
Well, we, our term is 10 years now. It used to be five. So I don't know if that should just change also.
Oh, I see what you're saying. So it's a term of 10 years, but then in, so I think what you're saying, Tal, is in section one, it talks about a term of 10 years. In section two, it talks about two consecutive five years.
Yep.
Or is it a discrepancy is the question?
Again, it's, this is exactly what it was last time. If we wanna change it, we certainly can. It doesn't really matter.
Does that cause confusion?
I don't think so. I mean, all you're saying is, we're renting it to you for 10 years now and in the future. That with this contract.
Renewal, okay, so this is, this is a 20-year contract with a 10-year base and two five-year options.
Yeah.
Okay, but we can change it, right? But it also means that when the time comes, we can create a new contract for a new 10-year term. So it's all very flexible. I think that's why Tal is saying this is kind of a village choice, a preference. I'm neutral on it. Has the cultural center seen this and approved it?
Not yet.
Gail, would you wanna see these five years changed to 10 years? Or are you okay leaving them? You're on mute now.
My dog is gonna bark. No, I just thought maybe that was a mistake because we went with 10 and left that other one at five.
No, this makes sense to me. It's a 10-year base with two five-year options on it, which makes sense.
Okay.
I'm comfortable with that. I don't think, from the conversations that I've had with Carol, I don't think that, I think they'll be happy to see a renewal of the existing. There is no rush on this at all. So if we want to ensure that they've seen it, which probably wouldn't be a bad idea, we can take this version and we can kick this down the road two weeks with absolutely no adverse impact. And make sure that the cultural center's seen it.
Could I forward that to Donna Johnson?
Yeah, you wanna do that? And can you just, you communicate with her and we'll come back in two weeks. Make sure they're happy with it. If anyone wants to see any changes, send, you know, or recommend any changes, send Tal an email. But I'm happy, honestly, with a 10-year base contract with two five-year options, I think, is pretty reasonable.
Okay.
Any other questions or concerns on the lease? That all makes sense, Tal? So.
Yeah, that's fine with me.
As it is, we're just gonna coordinate with the cultural center, make sure they don't have any questions or concerns over it. And then we'll look to enact it at the next meeting.
Yeah, we've got plenty of time, so there's no rush.
Okay. What else, Tal?
And then the only other thing is basically nothing to report as far as any progress for the community center, whether on the deed or on the memorandum of agreement or the payment of utilities. I don't even know if they've done that.
MJ, did we get a payment for our 2019 utilities?
Sent that demand letter over a month ago.
Let's, let's send another letter. I also, I'll talk to Rob, but I wanna make sure we're documenting with a letter, Tal.
Okay.
If we don't get a response with the next letter, I guess my question is, will we take legal action? Will we go to court in order to get the, to compel the town to comply?
I would feel that we have a moral obligation to do so.
It's certainly an obligation that they have. So just because they've chosen to not move forward with anything and not respond, doesn't mean they don't have to pay.
Yep. Okay, one more letter. I will talk to Rob this week. I've got a couple of topics I need to talk to him about. And then, and then we'll cross that bridge when we come to it, I guess, Josh.
Good.
Well, while we're at it, just, I think I sent you Stefan and MJ.
Yep, that's one of the other topics I've got about $4,000. Okay?
That's it. That's it for me.
Okay, I don't have anything else for Tal. Anybody?
No.
All right.
All right, thanks, everybody. I'll zoom off the joint now.
All right.
Have a good night.
And you better shave for next visit, okay?
All right.
MJ, let's make sure we make a correction to Future Minutes, that Wayne Butterworth is now our fire chief. I guess it's, is he officially the fire chief? Have you been sworn in?
No, I haven't yet. You're doing that next month.
Let's get that done. All right, so it is, you're reporting.
Can we, before he reports, can we just recognize and acknowledge this great mutually valuable change, both for the village and also Wayne? And, you know, recognize and thank the fire department and acknowledge that it's now under new leadership.
You're here. Thank you, Wayne. Get a little ceremony together, socially distanced here where we can do a swearing in.
Thank you, Wayne.
You're welcome. All right, so you got my report, right?
I do. Got it in front of me.
I didn't get it.
It was emailed out.
I got the police. I got the police report, but not the fire report.
All right, hold on a sec. I'm gonna do two things. We're gonna get brave with this today.
And also Stefan, I don't, just, are you, is anybody in the waiting room? I just.
No, not at present. Thank you for the reminder. Bear with me just a moment. I will attempt to share my screen.
Oh, I just got an email from you.
You did? I'm gonna try to share as well, though.
Yeah, I just received, I got it here.
All right, who can help me figure out how to share and Zoom? Share screen, got it.
I'm not gonna be able to help you with that.
Okay, you should be able to see my screen.
You know, before Wayne proceeds, it just seems like we have about, every department head is submitting a report in a different fashion. Some go to MJ, some go to trustees, some come to all of us directly. Maybe we should just have a single sort of unified way that the department head reports are distributed. That's just a suggestion.
I think that's a good idea. And why don't we plan on submitting reports to MJ? Wayne, Anthony?
Okay.
Okay, get them distributed to everybody that way. In this case, I think Amy just sent them out to MJ and myself. And I can never, this Google one kicks my butt. I can never figure out who's been sent to and, I'm sorry, the Yahoo. I'm used to Google. All right, anyway, let's proceed. Thank you, Josh.
So I got the ladder, we were finally able to get our ladder testing done and our hose testing done. Ladders, all passed except for one ground ladder, which end cap was missing, which we do have a new one and is being installed. During the hose testing, we lost three lengths, two and a halfs, and one, a three-inch line, which I was actually just something laying on the rack.
Okay.
The air conditioning down here at the firehouse, a new system that was just installed. The air conditioning, there's an issue with it. They're actually coming tomorrow to fix the leak and it is all covered under warranty.
Good.
There's a moving up parade for the fourth graders on 16th, 30th, 17th. We got, I got two trucks that are gonna, one's gonna be leading the parade with the police and the other one at the end. And Mossow setting up the ladder, the aerial with the big American flag up at the school for the children.
Okay, and Wayne, you and I talked earlier, I had sent, is it Jim, the principal? Excuse me.
Yes.
I had sent him the parade route that we used for the Memorial Day. He simplified it. So the parade route that you got from him is a much simpler version. So if you wanna change that, just make sure you work it out with him.
Okay.
And modify it how you think. Do you have his email and everything?
Yes, I do.
Okay, are you comfortable just working directly with him? Take the middle man out?
Yes, yep. We started drills a couple of weeks ago and doing outside drills. Been actually going down to the front park and just flowing water, getting everybody, you know, back at it.
Good.
And also to our dive team, which is a joint team with the city of Hudson, have been, started drilling past two Sundays. They've been going over to Clemmie County, over to Oakdale Lake and doing a lot of diving. Yesterday, those two new sets of gear finally came in. And we're handing to the two people.
Oh, great, good. So that, that was all five from last year, right?
Yes, yes, it was. This month, so we're gonna start our yearly maintenance of all the apparatus. What we're gonna try to do is every year, just right at the beginning of the, the season or the year, just send them all out, get them all done at the same time, instead of one, one month, one, two months later, just get it all done at once, all of them.
Isn't there, are you not concerned? What if there's like a call or something?
No, 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 no. One truck at a time. Not all, not all the trucks going out at once. Just like, you know, like actually tomorrow, I believe, the two, three, the aerial truck is going out. That'll be out for a couple of days. And then when that comes back, they're gonna take the one ETA, the one engine. Then when that comes back, you know.
So you make one truck right after the other rather than spacing them out over a number of
Spacing them out over the year.
Does that put us in any temporary insurance lapses between us and West Athens?
No.
When the ladder truck is in?
No, no. And, um, well, yeah, we, we were able to finally have our monthly meeting in elections. On our coals, we had, on the 19th, we had a water emergency cat where it was a report of a capsized boat down the cat by the bridge. It was unfounded. We think it was somebody traveling across the bridge and saw a kayak or it looked like, might have, might have looked like a boat, capsized. And a fire alarm. And we actually had another one on the 20, another water emergency on the 26th late at night, a report of a child in the Catskill Creek. And luckily, there was nowhere, there was a child in the water, but he got out and ran home.
Okay.
So and another alarm on the 29th. And then we had a fire alarm mutually to West Athens on the 4th.
How were your, how were your response callouts on those?
Oh, they're averaging about 10 to 15 people. And actually, the first one, the capsized boat, we actually had a large, had about 20 of our guys down there. And actually, the, the sheriff's department put Assistant Chief De Vecchio in charge of the whole scene. And, uh, you know, he was like basically the, the main guy running the whole scene and everything went really good.
Um, did we apply for a grant for additional turnout gear last year, Wayne?
Yes, we're still waiting to hear on that.
Okay.
That usually, I think it's, um, right, August, September, I think that's when they start releasing those grants.
And when did you put the grant in? March?
Yes, March. February, March, somewhere around there.
Okay.
And, um, I need approval to purchase some new radios. The first radio, it's for our assistant chief that's coming in, Jimmy, Jimmy Robinson. We don't have a UHF radio for his truck. So that price is $808.46. And we are taking out a, one of Dave's radios that he took out of his truck. It's a UHF that is gonna be installed in De Vecchio's truck. And it's a older model. And with it, it's a little confusing, the way his radio system works in his truck. It's a dual radio system, but a single head. So we were able to take that UHF radio and take its low-band radio out and install the UHF in. So the price of having Wells Communication come down to install the radios in both Jimmy's and Anthony's vehicles is $1,500.
Okay, and what's the radio for truck two?
What's that?
Radio for truck two and three?
No, no, that's two, three, the aerial truck. That truck, we've been having issues with for years now. And it's getting worse. I'm constantly getting phone calls from county dispatchers that they're unable to hear the person on the radio of that truck. And it's been going on for a long time. And it's one of, one of the older model radios that we've, we have in the fleet. That one, when we did the whole upgrade, we left that, that one out and trying to get another year or two out of it, but it's just getting worse and worse. So that price is 3184. Then that's including installation.
Okay. The status of the remaining radios in the fleet?
Everything is good except for De Vecchio's radio. That is identical to what is in truck two, three. It's the other oldest radio we have. It works okay now. I, sometimes he's, he claims he's having a little difficulties with it. So I was trying to hold off maybe another, another month or two and see how well it's working.
This is equipment budget that this comes out of?
Yes, that would be, the two radio purchases would come out of equipment and the installation radio would be out of repairs.
Which is that, that's the radio, that's the $3,000 radio?
No, 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 that, that would be the $1,500 for installation of the two radios.
Okay.
For car one and two, or two and three.
You want 4,000 out of equipment and 1,500 out of repairs to do this?
Yes.
All right, let's, MJ, let's make sure, do you have a PDF version of the budgets that you can send to the department heads, please?
Not right now. Yeah, I'll get them out.
Okay, I just wanna, you know, I want them to have cognizance over what they've got remaining. So that we're planning for, you know, we wanted to do more sets of turnout, right, Wayne?
Uh, we're gonna want to do three sets this year. Last year, we, we were able to get five sets.
Okay. All right, would anyone like to make a motion to approve the expenditures as requested?
I'll offer. I'll offer.
Rob offers, can I get a second? Go ahead, go. Gail, did you have a question?
No, I said I seconded it.
Oh, sorry, I didn't hear you. Okay, Gail seconds. All in favor?
I
Post. Aries. Anything else for the fire department?
I have a couple of questions.
Go ahead.
There is an item at the very end of the report. I don't know if Wayne was gonna get to that about starting the committee. And it says it's gonna consist of six fire department members, including the three chiefs. And I was just wondering whether we would want to put one of the trustees, either Amy or Rob, on that as well, to serve as a liaison.
Normally, usually we don't have anybody like that come in, but we always, always make sure we, you know, keep in contact with our liaison.
I'm hearing some kind of a ringing or something like that. Now it's stopped.
What is the goal of the truck committee, Wayne?
Well, to start designing it, I mean, I know it's, it's a few years out, but you just, you know, just can't go to a car lot and pick one of these things out. You gotta, it takes years to really sit down and look at other trucks and designing one. Cause I know like the, the one back in '06 that we bought, that took three years to design.
All right, well, I mean, I guess I would request that you do, at, you invite Amy, but not necessarily as a quorum or voting member.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
And I have another question for you, chief. It says drills have started again, and you know I'm particularly interested in 90 North Franklin. And I think at our last meeting, you had said that that was a drill site and that when drills began again, that would be kind of rotated in. And I just wondered if you had an update on that.
Yes, we are not allowed to use it now. Look, they were under the impression, they actually want us to come and burn it down for them. And I had John Greco, my training officer, contact them and they, you know, he was, just kept in touch with them. And all of a sudden, out of the blue, they said, okay, well, what do you plan on burning it down? And John's like, we're not burning it down. You can't burn a house down in a village. And he said, we, we just want to go in and, you know, take out walls, cut holes in the walls and, you know, and then they said, oh, no, no, we don't want that. And John even offered, listen, we'll get a dumpster here, we'll even clean up our mess. And they said, no, no, don't, no, never mind. We don't want you using it.
Okay, so, and I think that then goes back to, it's now an unsightly nuisance of no use to anybody. And Tal is not on the line anymore, but perhaps you or he could reach out to the owners and encourage them to move ahead with whatever the next constructive step is in the life of that property.
They're there, they're there now cleaning the inside out, the owners.
Yeah.
When you said cleaning, you mean cleaning
The inside, you're taking everything from the inside out and putting it in trailers and taking it to the landfill.
This is in anticipation of demolishing the building or renovating?
I, I think that's what he's doing, cleaning all the, whatever was left behind inside out first before they knock it down.
Great.
I tried to catch him there, you know, the past couple of days, but I haven't seen him. But when I do, I'm gonna stop and talk to him because if he's gonna knock it down and put another house there, I'm gonna recommend him that he run a new water and sewer line in there because the two that are there now are really stout.
Good. Other questions for the fire chief?
Keep up the good work.
I'll try.
Gail, are you gonna report out for the police?
Gail, you're on mute again.
Everybody got a copy of, please?
Yes.
Yes.
Hello?
Yep, we all have copies, Gail.
Yes.
Can you, now, Josh?
Yes.
Can anybody hear me? I'm frozen.
Yes.
We can hear you.
All right, you all right? Everybody can hear me?
We can hear you.
Okay, everybody got a copy of their, of his report?
We do.
Okay, then the only other thing he said, when we hear about the building remodel, we have to make sure we include a separate room in the police department area for juveniles to be questioned in. That's now a law. We can't question juveniles at this time. Our, we don't meet the requirement.
Okay.
Turcassio's retirement issue, there's no changes. Bill is waiting legislator to reconvene. And they continue to staff most day shifts. And they tested the two stationary radar units. One was a trailer and one was on the pole. The trailer was much, has much better visibility and warning features. Unit is much more versatile, less expensive. However, the visibility range is not as impressive. Both units did help slow traffic and keep motorists mindful of their vehicle speed. Both units were to be picked up this week.
Okay.
So severely, I guess we have to decide model we want, right?
Yep, when we went through the budget, we did leave, we did put enough in the budget to get one of the portable units.
Okay.
So let's, you know, get a couple of quotes and come back. If, if we've decided that the, the portable units are no longer the way to go and they're not gonna meet our needs, that's not really what I'm hearing. That's gonna be a little bit of a different conversation because I think it's about three to four times the price to get the trailerable unit, right?
Yeah.
Okay, so we put enough in for the pole mount unit, the temporary unit?
I'm sorry.
Okay, I'll let you know.
You, you're saying we're gonna go with a single pole-mounted unit?
Right now, that's what we put in the budget this year. My recommendation would be we continue to put it in the budget next year as well. I think two, maybe even three of those are useful. I do see them slow down traffic around the village. But one that we can move around, I think is, is a good purchase for this year.
The pole-mounted unit would be moved around then, rather than just
And we've been, he's been doing a good job of that. I see it moved about, he was like more than once a week in general, it's getting moved.
Yeah.
Gail, I have a question. I don't know if you know the answer. I see there was one arrest. Do we know what the charge was?
No, he doesn't usually tell us that.
Oh, okay. Is that, is that something, is there a, like a security reason that we're not told that? It would just seem like it would be helpful to know what kind of illegal activity is happening in the village.
It's a matter of public record.
Huh?
A matter of public record.
I think Stefan is saying, Gail, that it's a matter of public record anyway, so that if he wants to, that it's not as if it's a confidential piece of information and it might be interesting to us as trustees if he doesn't mind putting that into his monthly when the, when there are arrests.
All right, so I'll ask him if he can tell us what the arrest was for on his reports.
Okay. And Gail, maybe we talk with, with Anthony. I wouldn't mind with the, with the portable detector that we get a little sign, you know, that says something like, welcome to Athens, please respect your neighbors or something like that, right? That we can, that we can move around with the sign, make it a little more visible and
Well, I think we should also put what the posted speed limit is by that sign.
That's true too. So we'd need a couple of signs for that. Okay.
Okay, I'll get in touch with Roger and let him know.
Thank you. MJ, was this the final on the office, on the officer salaries?
I haven't even seen the report. I don't get it.
Okay, he's, he's reporting a total expended under budget. So a total expended of 85.5 against 95. So $1,000, $5,000 under budget.
Right now, we're doing the end of year, so I won't know that figure until that's entered into the software for the state comptroller's office to make sure that all of the, you know, buttons are there and whatever bells.
Some grants, cause I
Plus, there's a lot of things that have to be, you know, completed for May 31st that aren't done yet, so we won't know that.
Went after some grants. I was really expecting us to be over a little bit with the additional policing we've done, so it'd be nice if we're under a little bit or close. Okay.
Also, Gail, will you let Roger know since he's not here that going forward, the monthly report should go through the clerk, so she has
I, I've already notated that.
Okay. Any other questions for Gail regarding the police?
No.
No code enforcement officer? One in the waiting room. North Dome, Seth.
I just, I'm sorry, before Seth goes, I, I wanna just wonder if we should officially note that, I guess it will be in the minutes.
We do, yep, it's in the minute.
But do we want to say anything about that the code enforcement officer was not able to be present and no report was submitted?
Yeah, it'll be in the minutes.
Okay.
All right, Seth, you're up.
Good evening, everybody. How are you?
Good.
Did, will do, open up the copy of my report?
Yes.
Oh, I did not, let me find it. Go ahead and start. I'll find it while you
Okay. Starting with the water treatment facility, all the testing, everything came out well. Flows are pretty much normal. We had three callouts last month. We had three callouts last month. One for a low storage due to tripped finished water pumps. That was due to, as near as I can tell, because of a brief power outage. Not somewhat, not, not long enough to even kick on generator. Another one was a low chlorine residual. I mean, that was due to a booster pump failure that pumps the water through the analyzer. So the analyzer was reading zero, but there was plenty of chlorine in the water. So there was, that's all been taken care of. On more Sunday, the 24th of Memorial Day weekend, we called out for a low tank. And that was due to the SCADA program being lost again. We clearly wiped us out again. Called in the control tech, he came in and reloaded the program, got us back up and running. Once he reloaded the program, there was noise, what they call noise on the system. And, and we were able to trace it back to a blown communication card in the number two raw water pump. So as of now, we're running on one raw water pump. I got quotes for replacement communication cards for the raw water pumps and for the backwash pumps. Because those cars also have a tendency to go for no apparent reason or when we get a outage. So those quotes were attached to my report. The communication cards for the raw water pumps, I got a quote for two. That's eight hundred and forty-one dollars for the two of them. That would be one to be replaced right away to get the second pump up and running to put on the shelf. So we had one in case this happens again, or when this happens again.
Okay, what budget line item does that come out of?
That would come out of plant repairs and maintenance.
How much is on that?
Um, I don't know. I don't have a copy of the budget in front of me. I'm sorry. But being the beginning of the budget year, there should be plenty in there.
I would assume so.
Yeah, there should be. So I worked, I've got my worksheet here. Planting repairs and maintenance, yeah, there's 10,000 in the budget right now. So, so the cars for the raw water pumps, two of them be eight hundred and forty-one dollars. There'd probably be 250 or 300 dollars to get the, the one installed right away. And then again, we'd have a spare. I also have a second quote for a communication, two communication cards for backwash pumps. Both those pumps are running right now. But it would be nice to have a couple of cards on the shelf just when they go. And that, those came at $610.
And do they give you any, what's the, so the ramification of a raw water pump communication card failing is you lose one of your raw water pumps?
Correct.
What happens with the backwash?
Um, we, the, the filters won't backwash.
And how many filters are there?
Two.
Okay, so you've got redundancy built in there.
We have redundancy built in there, but, but the switchover is manual. In other words, if one pump goes down, the other one doesn't kick on automatically.
Okay, do they give you any, any failure indications or do they just suddenly go?
They just go.
Okay.
Also, I, I can understand why you're proposing that we get two of the, the raw water one because we need one to put in and one on the shelf. But why can't we just get one of the backwash since we have the one working now? Just to have a spare on the shelf and then buy another one in the future if and when that goes.
That would, that would certainly be acceptable to me.
It's $300.
Yeah, 300.
Okay.
And both, you know, both those items are in the budget, so I don't know if we need a resolution on that or not.
Um, we may as well do it since you've asked. I, so the, the request is authorization for two of the raw water pumps and one backwash device per the quotes given.
I move that. I'll move it.
I'll second.
Josh, Gail, all in favor?
I.
opposed. Carrie's.
I have another quick question for you, Seth. The SCADA program, which we know is plagued by problems. You had to call in a control tech, you said that was on Sunday of Memorial Day weekend. What was the charge for that? And I'm just trying to figure out how, and how many times, how often does that happen? How, how much are we paying over, let's say, a six-month period or a one-year period for service calls compared to, you know, whatever the cost would be of buying a new system?
Right, I haven't seen bill for, for the, for the last call in on, on that Sunday. But it's going to, I'm, it's going to be fairly expensive because it was after hours.
How often are those happening?
We've had it happen three times in the last year.
This was our fourth this year, wasn't it?
I think it's our, yeah, third or fourth.
And I'm like, we had like three within the first six weeks, as I recall. We were on a really bad trend initially. It seems like it slowed down.
Yeah.
We had started to talk about getting a quote to do something a little more permanent.
Yeah, I talked to the engineer briefly about that. I'm not sure where that's, where that is in, in the scheme, I think.
Is that Delaware?
No, it was, um, I can't remember his name. The other guy from La Grange, I think.
Lamont.
Jason, there you go. Thank you, Jason. Yeah. He has sent out a letter with, with, you know, some bare bones stuff written out and that was some time ago.
He sent out a letter, you meaning a request for quotes?
Oh, sent out a, a letter to the board. I saw a copy of it. Just basically given, you know, basic scenarios.
I don't think I ever saw that. Was that maybe before my time? How long ago?
No, no, it was, it was back probably mid-winter, I believe.
Yeah, it didn't give us any costs to repair or anything. It just kind of walked through why it might be causing it to fail, if I recall.
Yeah, and so I think there were some vague numbers in there, you know, basic ballpark figures.
Can you talk to me, Seth? Do you have a copy?
Yeah, I, I believe I have a copy of it. Yeah, I'll, I'll scan it and send it out to.
It looks like we lost Gail. Her internet has apparently gone down. We still have a quorum with the three of us. We will continue.
Stefan, you were about to say something about the SCADA system.
Um, yeah, I think what I'd like to do is let's get Brock. I think Delaware's got a lot more background on our SCADA system. And let's start having a serious conversation with him about short-term and long-term options for repair and replacement. So Seth, maybe I'll set something up with, with, what's his name, Brock, right?
Yeah, Brock Juice Lo.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, just let me know.
Can I, as, you know, Stefan, you've designated me as the liaison to water and sewer. So if I could be on that call too, I'd appreciate it.
You want to set it up?
I don't really want to set it up, but I'm happy to be on it. If you'd like me to set it up, I will.
I'll get it. I've got it. Okay, got it.
Okay, moving on to a village wastewater plant. We're in compliance for the month. We had average daily flows of 366,000 gallons. So we were under our 400,000. Little over two inches of rain put us over 400,000 six days for the month, which is considerably less than, than what we've been seeing in previous months. But again, we didn't have much rain either, so, so that's good. Then just things are going well this month too, because we haven't had much rain. We did some basic maintenance on the, the east digester. Drained it, cleaned it, removed the existing aeration diffusers, cleaned iters out, and installed new clog free diffuser. We've, we've, we've solved the clogging problem there. The pump station.
Sorry, what were the, what was the result of clogging problems? I don't remember having discussed that in the past. What was the symptom?
Well, it's not something we discussed. When we let, we shut the air off to the digesters, the old type diffusers that were in there. When we shut the air off to the digester to let the sludge settle so we could decant the clear water off the top and back into the system. When we went to turn the air back on, the existing diffusers would be all clogged up. So we wouldn't get, we wouldn't get good coverage of air throughout the whole digester. So we, we drained that one down. That was the east side. We drained that one down, or the west side, excuse me, drained that one down, cleaned everything out. And we found these very inexpensive, much less expensive than the existing diffusers. And installed those. We did the whole project for under 400 bucks.
So does that make it more efficient now because you can run it less and get the same clarity results?
Doesn't make it more efficient. What it makes it is, is, is we can aerate the whole digester when we, after we shut it down for, you know, a week or 10 days. Then we can turn the air back on and we get good mixing.
Okay.
Whereas before we were getting no mixing.
Okay.
And in the winter time, it's more of an issue because it builds up a lot of ice when you don't get a good mix. So that problem's been solved. And again, we did both digesters for about 400 bucks. That was good. Pump station, pump, pumping control panel replacement. DPW and, and North Dome got the new valves all installed. Thank you, Anthony and Wayne.
It's all done.
Hi?
It's all done?
It's all, the, the, all the new valves are in.
Okay.
Waiting on the contractors to come in and put the new pumps and the new control panels in.
So that went as planned, Wayne, Anthony, that no?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, well, well. And that's it for the village station or the village plant, Brick Row. Average daily flow about 8,000 gallons a day. I'm right about the middle of the road where it's supposed to be. Again, not much. Didn't, didn't exceed any permitted flow. Just keeps chugging along down there.
All right.
Question on the Brick Row wastewater treatment plant. Seth, I have seen some chatter in social media, people complaining about the smell from the Sleepy Hollow wastewater treatment plant. That's not this one, right?
No, no.
And that's, that, that's one that the village doesn't, we have no control or, or engagement with that. That's the property owners association in Sleepy Hollow that handles that.
That's correct.
Okay.
Anything else for Seth?
No.
Thank you, Seth.
Okay, thank you all. Have a good evening.
Nice.
Thank you, you too.
All right. Okay. We have a facility use application. This is from Maria Warshaw for pride flags on the poles attached to the fence. This will be after the American flags come down on Flag Day. The request is to hang two or three pride flags at the bottom of Second Street. And then, well, it says there's, it's not for any specific purpose, I guess. There, there will be a gathering to observe Pride 50, a 50th anniversary of Pride. Questions on this one?
I'm sorry, did you ask a question?
Do board members have any questions? All right, would anyone like to make a motion to approve? I would. We have a second. We only have two. Okay. Any, any discussion on this or anything?
Um, I, I just think it's a really great idea. And we, in our village, we take a lot of pride in the traditional kinds of observations in our community. We have a vibrant gay community and it seems like this is an opportunity to kind of add acknowledgement and recognition of the gay community to all the other communities that are present in our village.
Rob, any questions or comments or anything?
I'm not sure he heard you or knows that we're waiting possibly for a second. I don't know if that's going on or not.
Who, who are we waiting for?
You, if you're, if you're willing or.
Oh, I thought somebody seconded already.
No, we only have two.
Well, there's. I'm fine with it.
Okay, so you're willing to second?
Yes, I thought, I thought somebody already seconded already.
All right, so we got Josh offered, Rob seconded, all in favor. I. Motion carries. Thank you.
Did we lose a board member?
Yeah, we did.
Oh, I didn't know Gail was gone.
Yeah, Gail lost her internet, yeah.
Oh, okay, all right. I didn't know we were waiting on. I apologize for that. I didn't know we were waiting on me. I was a little confused there.
No worries. All right, and that did come with a, with an application with a nice note. Why, why it was being requested and some history on it as well. Well, thank you, Maria. All right, has everyone read the minutes? We've got two sets of minutes. I can find them here. We've got minutes from May 13th and we've got minutes from May 27th. Do we have any questions or corrections to the minutes?
I have no questions or corrections, but I do want to note that I have heard that people do look at these. And people are also looking at the video of the, of the meeting. So I just want to kind of thank our, the clerk and the deputy clerk, if she's helping as well in helping us getting out the meeting minutes and the, the video. Because this is, allows us to kind of be participating in representational democracy during a lockdown. So thank you and appreciate that.
I should dress nicer if people are actually watching these videos. All right. Any questions on, oh, Gail's back on here. Let's admit her. All right, would anyone like to make a motion to approve the minutes from both May 13th and May 27th?
I will.
I'll second it.
Rob seconds, all in favor?
I.
I, opposed. Minutes are approved. Gail, do we have you back?
I'm finally back. I finally came in and got back.
Um, all right, were we able to review the vouchers?
Yes.
Okay, would anyone like to make a motion to approve vouchers? As, as on the abstracts. I still go, just so you guys know, I still go through and sign every one of the, uh, the payment stubs as per normal. I, I do go through and review them all, but this is for approval of vouchers. Would anyone like to make a motion?
I'll offer.
I'll second.
Rob and Gail, all in favor?
I.
opposed. So Carrie's. Uh, correspondence, we only had one item of correspondence, which was an email that I believe everyone on the board received from Jane Raftery. Hope I pronounced that right. Questions or comments on that?
Um, you know, I'm just kind of a little bit prompted and inspired by Jane Cole's message. First of all, to thank you, Stefan, for your comments in the monthly newsletter in response to the extraordinary kind of stuff that's unfolding on top of COVID in our society around us. And I, I, we are, we haven't been called upon as a village to do anything officially. But I do want to say that my sense is that we're, fortunately, we have a. But I do want to say that my sense is that we're, fortunately, we have a, we have a fair, fairly peaceful village and people do seem to get along for the most part. But I think if the time comes, we need to perhaps examine if, what, if anything, we want to do in terms of participating in this kind of big sort of social wave that seems to be, has been gone on now for the last couple of weeks after the murder of George Floyd and the continued recognition of the importance of the Black Lives Matter movement.
Yeah, I think, you know, like I said in the note, I think we have to learn as individuals if we're going to change as a society. And I think the timing of reopening everything and getting back together gives us an opportunity to rethink how we treat each other. And I hope we all learn something.
And I think while it's not Black Lives, the fact that our village is going to, I think, have our first ever Pride observation is at least a kind of a parallel acknowledgement of the value we place on diversity.
Okay, thank you.
I'd like to add something to this, if that's okay.
Good.
You know, it was Jane that wrote the missive to you, Josh, and, I mean, to you, Stefan, and shared it with the rest of the board. You know, a statement from a village that Black Lives Matter is not talking about whether any particular village or town or city is having a problem. And I put that in quotes. It's talking about the value and connecting to a huge human issue in our country right now. It's not about speaking to, oh, this is the way we're dealing with a problem. We're fortunate to not have a problem. It is a proactive stance to state our connection to the Black Lives Matter movement. And that is what Jane was referring to. And that in fact is the basis of this entire movement. It's not about whether the Albany police were acting in any kind of brutal way. It's not about, there were over 1,000 people in Catskill. Not all of them agree about everything politically, but they came together to proclaim that Black Lives Matter. There have been three different demonstration in Hudson. One, a quiet vigil in front of a church. One led by the mayor of Hudson. Another led by a group of very young people. This is exploding all over the country. And Jane's letter to you was an invitation and an insistence that this village join so many other towns and villages throughout this country. So what you do about it is your decision. But I wanted to be very clear about what that letter was. It was not, oh, Athens should deal with its problem with black people or people not getting along in a particular way. So I just want to be very, very clear about what it is and what it isn't.
I just want to say one thing. You know, I see, you know, civic engagement as incredibly important. And I wrote another letter that I'm not sure that you got, Mr. Mayor, in response to your statement. If you haven't gotten it, I'll make sure you do. I just want to always take opportunities to communicate here. And we know that we can keep people really comfortable, really comfortable, by never bringing issues forward. And the language of the, of the mixed use message, because there were a few different things. This is so, so important. It's so important. And I don't want to be naive about, yeah, we, we don't have protests here. But it's the work of every single one of us to work on our own racism and to acknowledge what's going on. And again, I'll just reinforce, you know, you don't have to get behind the movement of Black Lives Matter. Finally, people are saying out loud, that Black Lives Matter. I just think it was a real missed opportunity. I think it continues not ruffling any feathers around a number of issues. And it's just a disturbing, missing of an opportunity. You know, we do have issues here. Anyone who is in differing establishments, we know we have issues here. And it's the work of every single one of us. This is a watershed moment. I've been doing this work for 50 years. This is different. And I want the village that we have chosen to live in to be a part of that. Not like, this is not about empathizing with our black brothers and sisters. This is about looking at our problem. So hopefully we'll have other opportunities. Hopefully, you know, there'll be some gathering at some point. So that like-minded people can, can, can join together safely in this village. So, thanks.
Yeah, and I didn't, I, I look forward to seeing your second note. I didn't see that.
Okay.
Certainly received the first.
And I just want to thank Maria and Jane for speaking up, speaking out. You are so far, I think, the only people who have, I know you speak for a lot of people, but it takes some bravery to do that when that's not a voice that's usually heard. And also just to add to your comment, Maria, about demonstrations in Hudson and Catskill. There was also one in Kuk Saki, so.
That's right, that's right, there was. And Skylar Kill, New York, with 1,112 people. Smaller populations than we have.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
Okay, let's go into new business. And I served a grant, I did sign, I did give you back, send you back the electronic signature on that, Mary Jo?
Yeah, I got it.
DPW Garage, so I met this morning with Lamont and with the general contractor and, Anthony, keep me honest on this. The total cost to run the radiant heat was about 29,000.
29,494.
We are opting to not do the generator, which was a total of 17,000. And there was another item that we were not doing. What was it?
The generator, which we're talking about.
The generator was one and there was a second item that came to a total of, it was within $400 of the cost of doing the floor. I don't remember what the second one was. At any rate, the net of it is we're staying at the price point, but we are going to run the radiant power. We're staying at the quoted price point, but we are going to run the radiant heat in the flooring. It will not actually mean we have radiant heat. We will at some point in the future need to invest another $4,000 to add the equipment to run the water heating, et cetera. We want to get it done while we have the opportunity before the concrete is.
Seth, I'm sorry, that was 39,494, not 29.
Okay.
It was 10,000, $10,400 for the spray foam insulation that they put on top of the, the two of me.
All right, I'll ask Jason, I'll ask Jason to give me a summary of what we talked about this morning. But I can send it to all the board members, so everyone knows what we're talking about. Obviously, I, I didn't document it this morning when we were out there chatting about it. So I'll get Jason to send that to everybody.
Seven, I just want to say how nice it was to see your smiling mug and that of all the other folks at the groundbreaking. It just seems like so much bad stuff is going on in our world and our society. And to see here in our little village, the people, all of us working together to kind of move forward with productive activities is, it's very heartwarming. So I want to thank you and DPW and Jason for kind of pushing that ahead and breaking that ground.
Yeah, and, and Rob's been a big part of it too, keeping it moving.
That's true. Rob has been one of the biggest boosters. I always look forward to Rob's cheerful messages about, with updates about DPW.
By the picture that I was the only one doing any work this morning. Thank you, Josh. So I will get a note out to everybody with the, the trade-offs that we discussed this morning and, and how we're keeping ourselves net neutral from a budget standpoint. Hopefully, everybody saw the note from Lamont that we got the negative, no effect declaration from a standpoint of the digs that we did for Native American Indian artifacts, et cetera, or any indications that may have slowed us down around the need to do further digs. We got a no effect letter. They did a lot of good digs. We had the state came out, participated, they dug up quite a bit of ground. So we were confident that we're safe to move forward with that. DPW pickup truck, we talked about, we've got a path forward on that. Anthony?
What's that?
DPW truck, we've got a pickup truck, we got a path forward on that. We'll talk about it at the next one.
Yep.
Can I just say, while we're on that subject, can I just say one more thing?
Of course you may.
All right. One option that we may want to consider, well, I can work with Anthony on the, looking for, you know, late model used truck, one ton dump truck, or I'm, I'm sorry, a pickup truck. F-350 would be a one-ton pickup truck. But I, I can tell you right now, they're a low mileage, late model one. As far, they're almost impossible to find, almost impossible to find. And it's a lot easier getting a half-ton pickup, which they, they can't have. But, but I'm just saying, it's a lot easier to find late model, low mileage, smaller vehicles. As opposed, when you move up to those type of vehicles, it's a whole nother class of truck. And to find a late model, low mile, one ton or three-quarter ton pickup truck is almost impossible.
Rob, is that because it's mostly like municipal and other?
Yes, yes.
Those folks cut, just buying, selling them, when they buy them, they keep them.
Yeah, commercial use. You know, generally, if you're going to buy a truck in that class, it's designed for commercial use. Heavy plow and towing, towing large loads and that. And one option that we could possibly do is put money down on the down payment on a new pickup truck and take out a small bond. I don't know the terms off the top of my head, but if there's one out there, we could pay half of the remaining balance next year. Half of the.
That's something I want to talk about this week is, then I'll talk to, maybe we can talk about it now. Can we do a lease like we did on the police vehicle? Where we can use the 15,000 that we put aside. And then we would not need to put the full amount of salary aside. We just need to budget for it annually and give me a sense of what that would cost us annually, right? The intent had been that we would do this over three years. So if we can still do a payment where we do the lease-to-own payments like we did on the police vehicle and have it paid off in three years, we've met the intent of what I had budgeted for. Let's see if we can pull something like that off.
I mean, I can, I'll gladly work with Anthony, you know, we'll get together and get the prices that you want, you know, on, you know, we want a couple more prices. If the crossroads price comes in the lowest or whatever, I know he got that quote several months ago. Well, we're going to go see if they can hold that price for us.
Okay.
Maybe even do a little bit better, so.
Okay.
Right, so.
Nothing, nothing spurs like competition.
Well, I am, I'm a firm believer in that. I think it keeps everybody honest.
Okay. All right, so let's look at that option as well. See if, see if that kind of an option's on the table for a vehicle like this, like we did for the police.
Okay.
Then we don't, then we don't upset the budget too badly.
Okay.
Okay, that is all the business on the agenda. Josh, any other items?
Well, we sent out a revised agenda that has the Conservation Advisory Council.
Sorry, I didn't get that. Yep, thank you, I've got it right here. I forget, it's not on the agenda, I just printed. Okay, has everyone had a chance to read through the revised Conservation Advisory Council law? So we made a couple of changes. We changed the should to shall on the 30 years or younger.
The other way around.
Added, sorry?
Other way around, shall to should.
Should, thank you. We added the duties and responsibilities of the tree committee as part of the now, the duties and responsibilities of the Conservation Advisory Council. The two that I remember, what other changes did we make, Josh?
Added the Climate Smart Community Task Force responsibility.
Thank you. Any questions on that?
No.
All right. So we have a resolution, I apologize, I printed the wrong version of the agenda. Resolution is, whereas the Board of Trustees of the Village of Athens previously adopted.
No, 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 first we have to pass the law.
What is this resolution for? I thought it was for passing the law. This is establishing the council, okay.
Right, the, the, the law creates the Conservation Advisory Council. And then because we had previously created a Climate Smart Community Task Force by resolution, what the resolution does is it takes that back so that the, we eliminate the Climate Smart Community Task Force because this now exists. And then I had been appointed as the coordinator of Climate Smart Community and the task force. And so this transitions my role into this new context.
Got it, I'm clear, I apologize, I didn't read the resolution well enough. Thank you. Would anyone like to make a motion to approve the local law establishing a Conservation Advisory Council for the Village of Athens?
I would, yeah.
Josh?
I'll second.
Gail, all in favor?
I think.
Opposed, carries. Next. So you'd like to enact the, the committee as well, correct, Josh?
Well, this, then, now we do the resolution, which essentially abolishes the Climate Smart Community Task Force because we now have the Conservation Advisory Council. This is just kind of housekeeping. This, all this does is it tidies up the fact that we already created something that was going to do this work and we're abolishing that now and saying the work will be done by this new committee. And it says that I'm the same role that I had with the old committee, I'm going to now have with the new committee.
Questions for Josh on that? Okay, I won't read the entire resolution, it was included in the email. Would anyone like to make a motion to approve the resolution? Or, I would have to read the whole thing if I were to summarize it here, so as per described by Josh.
I'll offer that.
Yeah?
I'll second it.
Rob, all in favor?
I.
So passes. Anything else on that new agenda that I missed, MJ?
No, that was it.
There, there's also one other piece of business related to the Conservation Advisory Council. I sent out to the board a kind of sample recruiting letter because we now do, we do need to get members for the Conservation Advisory Council.
Yep.
And so I would imagine that it would go into the newsletter, on the website, social media. And just if, if any board member is approached privately with requests about how to apply. So I, this was a draft for that.
So let's, yeah, let's get into the comcom. As well as, we probably should do a press release and get that to the comcom.
The only, if, if this letter is good as is, the only piece that's missing from it, one is today's date, which is easy to figure out, that we created the Conservation Advisory Council. But the only other piece that's missing is how long would you like to have opportunity to apply open?
The The Climate Smart Community Task Force, when did we anticipate kicking that off originally?
Well, I mean, it, we didn't, I mean, it was, we, the Climate Smart Community work is happening. And we do need to create this committee in order to do it.
Why don't we plan on six weeks, forty five days?
Okay.
That sound reasonable?
Yeah.
I think things are just happening a little slower. Normally, I'd say thirty, but things just seem to be happening a little slower these days on some of this stuff. So let's plan on forty five days.
Six weeks is what, forty two days? Do you want, I mean, it's, you want forty two or forty five? What would you like?
I'll leave that to your discretion.
Okay.
Pick a date that makes sense, you know, just pick a date about six weeks from now. That's, you know, before a board meeting that gives us time to get the results in, compile them and come to a board meeting for approval.
Okay. Can I ask a question?
Then it's.
From the, for the Communications Committee, for the newsletter, we don't have another newsletter coming out until the first week in July.
Okay, so we'll
That will work.
Get it out on, we'll get it out on Facebook and stuff. So first of July.
It's only three weeks.
Yeah, that's okay. That's about halfway through the six weeks. So that's
Okay, cool.
You get into both.
Great.
We want to get it in a newspaper as well?
I don't.
Probably with a press release. If we if we put the need for volunteers in the press release and a referral to where to find the information they need as part of that.
Okay.
Yeah.
Can you, can I just add, because this is something that I've heard a lot. There are an awful lot of people who aren't on social media, so or are just aren't paying attention to it now because they got a little overwhelmed. So if there's another way to either put something in the post office, put it in stewards, you know, just, just post something where people can read it beside social media. They won't feel as excluded as they do.
Okay.
Would that be, Nancy, is that something that the Communications Committee can be charged with as kind of an extension of communications function?
Sure. Yep.
Yeah, basically, what we're talking about is just a hard copy of the Facebook post, right?
Yep, and just putting it up. I could, I could take care of that.
Thank you.
I don't have anything else, Stefan.
Okay. All right, MJ, you said that was the only other thing on the agenda that I missed?
Yes.
Thank you. All right, Rob?
Um, just the only thing, we covered the pickup truck already in the garage. The only thing is, Gail, if I can maybe send you an email regarding the DPW contract, maybe some ideas that I got, you know, swap ideas back and forth wherever and then come up with something to get things moving on the contract for them guys.
That's me.
Stefan.
Oh.
That's me. I'd love to chat with you about it. As a matter of fact,
All right, okay, all right.
Monday with Rocco again.
Okay.
We met this last Monday and and exchanged ideas. We'll meet again this Monday. If you want to just give me a call before then, we can chat and then you're certainly welcome to attend the meeting. Let me give it to you. It'll be at the village office Monday at with me.
Five o'clock.
Monday at five o'clock in the village office.
Okay.
Yep.
And that's it.
That was it. Gail?
I lost that.
You lost Tal, MJ?
Nothing.
Wow, all right. Well, I got the longest list today. All right. Where are we on the commendation letter for Officer Cole?
I started, I'm going, using the information that Roger sent me. I started working on the letter. What I'll do is I'll close, close it out and then send a rough draft, I guess, to you and Gail and see if it looks good to you.
That'd be great, yeah.
And then I will put it on the official village letterhead, I guess, if it's an agree agreement with everybody and
Perfect.
And then we'll
Wow, and maybe we all sign that one if we like. I mean,
Yes.
It'd be good to have every one of us sign it.
Okay, all right, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. We'll get that done.
Excellent. I want to thank Gail for the work she's done with the reopening committee. The governor threw us a curve ball. We were expecting to be doing initial sort of restaurant reopenings on the seventeenth. And last Wednesday, the governor announced that we could open Thursday. And so Gail responded, we got together. We met in person with Crossroads. I met in person with the Stewart House. I met in person with Hager's Harbor. I have left multiple messages so far with Stella's because I've got some ideas on what we can do for them as well. The goal is to try to make sure that if if we've got seating, we've got opportunity available to give them some space where they can sort of make up the seating revenue that they're losing by only being able to open fifty percent inside on the seventeenth, or to extend what they're capable of doing in outdoor dining today, we will. So if you drive by Crossroads, and if you've driven by Crossroads today, anytime after about nine AM, you'll see that we put some barricades up and extended their outdoor seating. That gives them the ability on a nice day, as it stands now, to essentially get back to a hundred percent seating. They're considering putting a tent up, which is in in concert with the governor's guidance. Now, I've had to submit with that a package. They submitted to me a licensee certification request. I had to submit to the SLA a municipal application. They gave me a drawing of what they were requesting, and I had to put together what's called a Supervision and Control Plan. So Gail, I, Roger, and the business owners have met to talk about how we do that. That's what resulted in things like the barricades that you see. I have additional barricades that Anthony was able to procure from us from the town, thank you, that are now waiting down at the water department. We're waiting to get kind of final word from the Stewart House, what they want to do. If they want to extend a little bit, but we're prepared to do that fairly quickly for them, should they want to extend. What I think I would do with Stella's would be to offer them some of the picnic tables in the park. What the SLA application allows is for them to be able to serve alcoholic beverages on village property, essentially, on the streets, on the sidewalks that currently belong to the village. It's a temporary, purely COVID-based law that's out there that that grants me the authority to do that. So I've done it for Crossroads so far. I'm expecting Stewart House to get me something. And I've heard that Stella's wants to talk to me, but I've gone down there and left my name and number twice and haven't heard back, but I expect that I will.
Stefan, what about Food Studio?
I, so I spoke to David at Food Studio. He, right now, doesn't think he's got the brand. He's focused on Hudson. So he's not anticipating opening until he can fully open.
Stefan, I think we have to check and see, we might not be able to let Stella's go over into the park.
I looked at that. It says that it has to be in front of, but it can make allowances for gaps. And then it says, for example, pedestrian walkways. So I'm taking the street as part of the, for example, pedestrian walkways. So I view it as directly in front of Stella's, with the exception of a gap of a motorway. So I will talk to Tal on that as we get closer, but that's the way I read it, Gail. I think I can
I have a question.
Yep.
Are we taking, are you anticipating or planning on taking away picnic tables that the community uses in the park so that they
Not at present.
Okay. Okay, great.
We took, we we used for Crossroads, the three picnic tables that were in waiting that hadn't been assembled yet.
Yeah, that I know.
They offer a few of the wooden picnic tables to Stella's if they want them.
Cool.
To make sure that we're being fair to everybody.
They should just know that they come with splinters.
Noted. And they would have to put some kind of a
Okay.
Okay.
All right.
All right. We, I sat down with MJ and Don. We put together kind of a draft reopening plan for the village building. I sent it off to Rob, which is another one of the items I need to talk to him about. To adhere to the rules that we're setting down. It will require extra cleaning. So I spoke to Larry, and he's comfortable doing it. It would mean adding about six hours a week to Larry's time to be able to cover cleaning. Obviously, something else I need to talk to Rob about. What it would mean would be, he would do his normal morning and afternoon cleanings. And he would also come through three times a day to wipe down all touch points, handrails, knobs, and countertops where the public is going. There will be a requirement to maintain a log of who's coming into each of the office spaces as well as a log of the cleaning of those spaces. So we published all that. There were a couple other things that we published out to the town. So I let them know, I need to let Connie know, MJ. So I wanted to, I wanted to see if you could send me Connie's contact info if you have it. I can't seem to find Connie's email. So I'll send that to them as well. The next piece of this that we're talking about that I need to talk to Larry about, I don't know if you got a chance to talk to him today, MJ, or yesterday when we talked
No.
Cleaning the gym. What I would like to do, assuming we can afford to do it, is to begin holding meetings in person again, socially distanced in the gym. So I need to make sure, however, that we can comply with and afford the cleaning requirements in order to do that. Backup plan would be that we can, that we would do it socially distanced in the village office. But that would mean we'd have to find a way to Zoom broadcast. We can't get a lot of people in there. We really can't get more than about three people from the public in there, which is obviously far less than optimal. So we're looking at it. If I can't sort out the gym, I would expect that we continue the Zoom meetings as long as we're allowed by the state. But I'm confident we can find a way to use the gym and bring in socially distance. One aspect of doing that, though, is we need to either find or invest in some kind of a sound system, I think, or people won't be able to hear us as we have the meeting.
Stefan, what about the firehouse?
Talked about it again. We have the same cleaning requirements.
Uh huh.
So I don't know that that necessarily helps us, but it is an option. We talked about, I prefer the gym.
Yeah.
Just because it's more in our direct control from a cleaning standpoint.
And it's right next to the office.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, the ZBA is doing it outdoors. Which I would be, would be interesting, and maybe we do that once, but the problem is we can't really set a rain date. So it would be, it would be interesting. It would be fun. It would be you know, a nice kind of community opportunity, but a little worried about, a little worried about the weather.
Could we put up a tent in the parking lot?
Don't have a tent.
But, but what I'm, what about the cost of the cleaning?
Actually, that's fair. That's a fair point. I don't know.
Cost of the cleaning for several meetings, or however many it would take, how many weeks or months of extra cleaning would be involved versus the cost of renting a tent through September.
Look into that because actually, Crossroads is looking at tents, so I can get some context for them and some idea of what that'd cost. And put it
Thousand dollars a month.
Thousand a month?
My nephew looked into it for the restaurant in Catskill.
How big is that?
I'm not too sure, but it's probably about twenty by twenty, around that size.
Got it, noted.
Which wouldn't be big enough, I don't think.
Yeah, probably wouldn't, unless we put it right up against the stage. Kind of used all that space, but all right, well, I will, I'm still working on it, but just letting you know what we're thinking of and and what we're planning on doing here. Um. MJ, do you post the planning board minutes or has Amy been posting?
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead.
Would you consider doing both the Zoom and a meeting, a public meeting? I think you get great attendance on Zoom.
Yeah, I agree.
Why not continue that?
I I agree. My concern is that I don't have the AV equipment to broadcast and get audio in a large room. So we're talking about it. Right now, I don't have the capability. So, but I I agree. I think we're getting good attendance at the Zoom meetings. I like doing the Zoom meetings. So it's, it's, we, I will, I, I'm looking at that and I would like to be able to do that. I just need to figure out how I do it technically.
Yeah, I think the issue is in the gym, it's, it's a matter of Wi-Fi access, which I don't think there is.
No, but I think that, you know, I think we're all learning how to do business in the future. And I think, I think it's, it's worth kind of taking the lesson that a combined Zoom meeting slash in-person meeting gives people a lot more eligibility. I'm not entirely sure that broadcast meetings, live broadcast meetings are legal. I have to find that out about that. They've, they've been made legal on a temporary basis. So I need, just need to look into legalities of it as well as make sure I've got the equipment that I can do it and that it's not becoming a detractor from the meetings.
Larry always used to post these on YouTube.
He would record and post later, not live.
Got it.
And that was just something that he did voluntarily. That wasn't an official function of the village.
But that's something else that we're learning is a lot of people do like to go back and look at the recorded meetings afterwards as well. So that's, that's something I think we can definitely keep. I think we've created a YouTube page now with all the meetings.
Yeah.
And I think it's getting, you know, a fair number of hits. Make sure we continue to do that moving forward as well.
Yeah.
All right. So MJ, planning board minutes haven't been posted for 2020? Is that you or is that Amy?
No, I don't do it, no.
Who, who should be posting planning board minutes?
I believe Amy, when she gets them from the Planning Board Secretary.
Shouldn't the Planning Board Secretary be able to do it?
The Planning Board, I could answer, I mean, the Planning Board Secretary, Planning Board doesn't participate really in social media.
No, this is about putting it, purely putting it on the website. Where it's required, we're required to have it.
You mean just the
I have the hard, the hard copies. I can just scan them and send them to Amy if she wants them.
Um. Who, are you doing the village board meetings or is Amy doing those?
I just send them to her and she posts them.
All right, yeah, let's get don't send them to her yet. Let me reach out to Maggie. She probably has them electronically and can get them sent rather than you doing all the scanning. Okay. Return the nicer to grant. Amy and I met with good energy. So I think we've got a good plan going forward now to make sure that we're doing all of the outreach that we need to for the CCA. Help me out. What's CCA?
Community Choice
Community Choice Aggregation, thank you.
Cheaper electricity.
Yes. We will start to publish what the prices are. We got, with, with energy having been as low as they were several weeks ago, I think we got a really great deal. There is also, they mentioned a solar incentive. Where if you sign up for community solar, you get a ten percent additional discount on the bill. So there's really an opportunity to save quite a bit. We just need to make sure that we're getting the outreach. So there'll be, it'll be a number of things that they're going to provide to Amy to get out on social media. There will be mailings that happen. There's an iHeartRadio spot that was done. So we're going to try to make sure we get, we will make sure we get a lot of outreach done here in the next couple of months as we move forward with the Community Choice Aggregation. Everyone, just for those on the call, everyone who currently has Central Hudson will be switched over to the CCA. In order to not do that and to stay with your current provider, you need to do an opt out. Now, that's, that said, if you had gone out and selected a third-party provider yourself, you will not even show up on their book, so you won't be affected by this at all. But if you took the kind of default service through Central Hudson, you will have to through Central Hudson, you will have to, uh, you will be switched over to the CCA unless you deliberately opt out. And all this will be published in multiple forums over the course of the next several weeks, uh, to let everybody know about it. And then I think we already hit the EJA Moving Up Ceremony, uh, just another real good opportunity. Uh, what that's about, the principal of EJA, um, reached out to me. They wanted to do, um, sort of just, all he was thinking is can I, can I use a little bit of Third Street to park cars so the students can drive by their teachers uh, and basically have all their teachers wave and, and do, uh, kind of a graduation, moving up ceremony that way. Um, it was just another good opportunity to get the police and the fire and, and do a little bit larger of a, another driving parade through the community. Uh, so that'll be on the sixteenth. I don't have the times yet. Uh, Wayne, make sure we get that published with the times as well as you figure all that out. Let me and Amy know, uh, and we'll get that all published out on social media as well. So we can get, you know, people out on their front porch is waving and yelling for the kids as they drive by.
I believe it's nine o'clock. They're gonna, uh, the parade was supposed to start. We're meeting, uh, between eight and eight-thirty up at Constein Court. That's where the meeting area is.
Just, let's make sure either, either you or if you, if you talk to Jim, just kind of put that together in a package so we can get that out on social media to everybody.
Okay.
Okay. I think, you know, I think people on the route will enjoy it every bit as much as the kids. We got a real good showing for the, for the
Right.
Um, okay. That was all I had.
Stefan, uh, will the Athens Addiction Group meet tomorrow?
Yes, I'll put a note out here tomorrow morning. All right. Would anyone like to make a motion to adjourn?
All for
Rob?
Second.
Josh, all in favor?
I
Close? So carries. Thanks, everybody. Have a good night.
Night.
Night.